I'd like to call the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five City of Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have two new planning commission members on with us tonight. So we have Philip Landsberg and Joe Alucci, I believe. So I guess we can go through a call, but you know, just state your present, you know, commission presence. So, starting on my right.
Commissioner Sosa here.
Commissioner Combs is present.
Commissioner Alucci present.
And we have a quorum. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, an item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the planning commission or the applicant. Right now, we have the, we only have the standing approval of the minutes as written for the meeting on June twenty third, twenty twenty five. Is there anything, anybody from the planning commission would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Combs with a second by Commissioner Sosa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving to the regular agenda. Item number one, Tuscan Farms, second plat, revised preliminary plat and final plat. This is item number twenty five dash three one two dash oh seven. We have staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners.
Hello.
The applicant is requesting approval of a revised preliminary plat and the final plat for Tuscan Farms Phase Two. Phase one of the development was approved on December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, and is under development. The developer is proposing to move the amenity area on the currently platted tract farther to the west. Relocating the amenity area allows for the development of three lots using infrastructure constructed with the first phase. The proposed preliminary plat is for six single-family residential lots and two tracts. One is for the relocated amenity area farther to the west, and the other is for a detention basin to the south. The total area included is two point eight acres. The preliminary plat includes only that portion of the property that is proposed to change. The currently platted amenity area is zoned R three, which is the Garden Apartment District, while the rest of the property shown on the preliminary plat is zoned R one, which is single-family. The applicant, the six single-family houses and the amenity area are both allowed in R one and R three. So you can have a single-family house in the R three district. The section outlined in red is the area that will be final platted. The proposed final plat is for three single-family residential lots located in tract C, where the amenity area was previously approved, and tract F, that will contain the detention area. The final plat is one point one five acres in size. The street, water, and sewer are already in place since they were installed with Tuscan Farm Phase One. No additional right-of-way is proposed to be dedicated. However, additional utility easements for electric are needed and are shown on the south side of those three lots. Staff finds that the preliminary plat is in general compliance with the Land Development Code, that it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and that the plat provides access points for further development of future phases. Staff also finds the final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat, and that the detention basin will need to be built prior to the houses, and excise tax will need to be collected. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and final plat with the three conditions listed. Condition one is for the detention basin. Condition two is for the excise tax, and then the third is to ensure the plat is recorded. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Is the applicant here and would like to make a, make a presentation?
Can't see me very well. I'm Jim Long. I'm with Schlegel. I'm just here to answer any questions. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Jesse put out there, so I'll be here if you need, if you got any questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll move on to commissioner discussion. Any questions or comments? Starting on my right, sorry. I have more questions. Okay. Commissioner Sosa?
I don't have any questions either.
Only question I have is related to the stormwater basin and the comment of it needing to be built, obviously, prior to the homes. I would imagine with the follow-up and the things that we're doing as a city, we're ensuring that that process stays. The same meaning that the tract F and the storm track basin is going to be constructed before the lots?
Yes, with that condition, it will be built before the houses are built. So the stormwater will be properly detained according to Title fourteen in our code.
And more of a procedural question, maybe this is more for me, but we, or you or staff follows up with the builder, or how does that, how can we ensure, or how are we to know that that condition will be met, I guess, is the question?
So the developer would apply for a public improvement permit, and that it would be inspected and approved before any building permits were released. Perfect.
Perfect, thank you. No other questions?
The, the other thing I will just add to this for discussion purposes is that this is an interim basin. So if future phases of Tuscan Farms move to the south as are planned through their preliminary, previous preliminary plan and plats, the basin would be taken out at that point, and then the permanent basin may show up in another location at that time. So the tract is really intended to handle the detention for this portion of this added three lots at this point in time. So, and Jesse's absolutely right, we would not release building permits for those three lots until that basin is in place.
Thank you.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
I don't think I've had any, had any questions either, so I will entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion. The planning commission. I got a little head on. I don't need to second that. Read it out. Sorry. Of course, sorry. Here's my motion. The planning commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat and final plat for Tuscan Farms, second plat, subject to the following conditions, items one, two, and three listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Combs with a second by Commissioner Sosa. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, so on these plats, the planning commission is the decision-making body, so I'm going to clarify the recommendation you're actually approving of the preliminary plat and the final plat, correct?
Yes, that's mine.
Do we need to make a motion to amend that?
I think that if we just start from the top, because we didn't vote. So start from the top, because there was no vote yet, just to be safe.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Great. I just want to make, I just want to make sure I don't need to read something different, so that we have to do this again.
You're good. This is one of the tricky ones where you guys are up the final say on this one, so it's like you're approving, not recommending it, because it's.
Understand.
It ends with you.
The plats, yes. All right. I'm going to start over with the motion. The planning commission approves the preliminary plat and final plat for Tuscan Farms, second plat, subject to the following conditions, items one, two, and three listed in the staff report.
Second motion. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Combs with a second by Commissioner Alucci. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number two, Hilltop Ridge Preliminary Plat. This is located at the south side of one hundred and sixty seventh Street and Scott Street. Staff presentation?
Thank you. Before you this evening is a preliminary plat that most of you saw five years ago. It has expired, and therefore they're coming back to get that preliminary plat reapproved, and this is the exact same one that you saw five years ago. So the property you can see is outlined here, and the first plat has been recorded and homes are under construction. So it's for the remainder of the development for Hilltop. For orientation purposes, north is on the left or towards the left of your screen. The, overall, the development is a hundred and fifty lots, and that is on seventy-one acres. This is zoned R one. There are no deviations. It's just a straight plat, not a planned development. And staff is recommending approval of the Hilltop Ridge Preliminary Plat with the four conditions outlined on the screen and in your staff report. The first one relates to providing a second point of access specifically to the south to connect with Osage Street, and there may be some additional modifications to the, minor modifications, I would say, to the layout for traffic calming purposes in this development. So that's what the second sentence is referring to. Then we have a condition related to the open space. The third relates to stormwater and is a standard condition. And then we also have that, the fourth condition also relating to stormwater in terms of they may be doing some interim phasing, overdetaining, underdetaining, and so we've included that in terms of the full build-out for the development. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is present and available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Been informed the applicant doesn't have a presentation. Is that correct? All right. Well, we'll move into commissioner discussion then. Start on my left this time.
I have no questions at this time.
No question.
Okay, so it's, it's coming back to us because it expired, right? So nothing, nothing else has changed?
That's correct. That's correct. The plat is the same, the preliminary plat is the same one that you all reviewed five years ago.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Yeah. And it's similar to the last one. This would be an approval, not a recommendation. Just to clarify. I'll entertain a motion on this item. I don't have any questions.
I can make a motion. The planning commission approves the Hilltop Ridge Preliminary Plat with the following conditions, one through four, as noted on the staff report.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sosa with a second by Commissioner Combs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Moving on, item number three, Grand Street Revised Preliminary Development Plan. This is a public hearing item. Do we have a staff report? Or, yeah, staff presentation, sorry.
Yes, we do. Good evening, everybody. Again, this is for Grand Street. Back in, the application is for rezoning for, and revised preliminary development plan and preliminary plat. Sorry, jumped the gun. Property includes approximately ten point seven five acres of land located just north of both Grand, Grand Street Elementary and Crow Ridge Middle Schools. It's bound by north, a little further to north by the BNSF Rover tracks. This was originally annexed back in twenty twenty-two, and the site was historically used for agricultural. Part of this has already been approved, but the reason why they're coming back before you is that they're looking at the deletion of the three-story, ninety-unit assisted living facility and redeveloping that into fourplexes. The original plan on the Villas of Grand included eighty-nine compact single-family lots, twenty-seven fourplexes, two duplex buildings. The ninety-unit, three-story building I just mentioned, and then also to the north of that is a hundred and thirty-two unit, four-story independent living and a couple of amenity areas. This slide shows the current zoning. As you can see, the, where the three-story, ninety-unit assisted living facility was rezoned to RP five back in twenty twenty-three. Because of major changes are being proposed, that's why they're back before you today. In this area, is the new layout is shown on this slide. It's being proposed to go to RP three, what was zoned RP five. Same types of buildings that were previously approved. Let's say, replacing the ninety-unit building with basically like eleven fourplexes, and a couple of road changes have occurred too, with the extension of the cul-de-sac to the north or White Drive. Staff finds that this is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, has a traditional suburban pattern buffered from, buffering, single-family to south. It's an infill residential development of long vacant lot. They've requested flexibility that supports lower density development patterns and more open space. The applications are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. The development plan and plat do not deter any existing or future development on adjacent properties as well. They have five deviations that they are requesting. These deviations were approved with the, the original final development plan that came back in in twenty twenty-three. These are the same exact deviations that were requested back then. Eight-foot sidewalk for a parking with vehicle overhangs. They're proposing six feet. Reduced sidewalk width should only be needed along the parking for the amenity area, where staff is supportive of this deviation. Second deviation is eight-foot primary route between the street and parking area, proposed, they're proposing six feet. Again, the staff recommends, or is supportive of the deviation as long as both of these deviation requests conform to ADA standards. Third one is parking lot design. Residential parking setbacks should be twenty-five feet, except parking permitted in driveways. Detached houses, duplexes, or row houses should not be, should not count as parking lot. Parking amenity setback of fifteen feet for the pool track is what they're requesting. The parking lot for the amenity area is required to have a twenty-five-foot setback based on residential zoning. Staff is supportive of the deviation. Fourth deviation is for building setbacks. Front yard setback for the garden apartment building type, or the fourplex, pinwheel, quadplex, is twenty-five to fifty feet. Side yard setback minimum is seven feet, backyard is twenty-five. They're proposing all exterior lot setbacks of three feet for the garden apartment building type in the RP three zoning district. Again, staff is supportive of this deviation. And the fifth deviation request is building coverage from forty percent to seventy-six percent. And staff is supportive of this deviation as well. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan to rezone ten point seven five acres from RP three and RP five districts to RP three planned garden apartment district, including the deviations as requested, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following conditions, following two conditions. And if you have any questions, we're available, as is the applicant's engineer.
Thank you. Is the applicant president would like to make a presentation?
Yes.
The applicant, sorry.
Are we able to ask questions?
We're, we're going to have an open hearing here in a minute. I just want to give them an opportunity first. Okay, all right. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Individuals wishing to speak will have three minutes. Individuals representing a group such as an HOA will have seven minutes. Please state your name and address for the public record when you come forward to speak.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Stewart. I live at six twenty East Lakota Street, so I'm just right across from this new development. I am low hearing, so if you went over this, I apologize for being redundant. I'm just wondering if the fifty-four plex units and the ninety-unit assisted living and the fourteen fourplex units, are they single? Are they just one story, or how many stories are we talking on these? I'm sorry? They're all single-story, all of these are. Okay, all right. And I, I understand it's going to go in sections, so I'm just wondering the, like, the ETA of your building?
I'm going to let the applicant actually answer that question. Stan, if you want, you can, for Jesse, could you pull the phasing of the one that shows the old buildings?
Let's, I say, just for the interest of time, if you have your questions, let's get those all listed out now, and then that way we can go through, we can, you know, answer as many questions as we can. So I'm taking notes on your questions about the construction phasing and what that will look like, and then after the public hearing, if we need to pull up the slides and look at stuff with, with the commissioner discussion, we'll do it at that time.
You're going to get back to me?
You'll, you can hear and listen, but there won't be an opportunity for you to dialogue with the, with the commission itself.
So all he's trying to, for the order of the meeting is get all your questions out. So if you have some more questions, let's get those too, and then as we come up, we can answer all the questions at once. So, do you have other questions besides those two items?
Not just yet.
Okay.
Good thing.
Okay.
Yeah, is there anyone else that is wishing to speak on this item?
What I would, what I would suggest in this case is keep the hearing open and allow the applicant to come up and speak to those two questions as well at this point. And then if there are other questions that arise because of that, I think we, by leaving the public hearing open, that affords the opportunity for any other questions.
Okay. All right. If we could have the applicant come forward to address the question about the phasing of the construction?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning commission. I'm Mark Huggins with Paint and Brickway. We're the civil engineers on this project.
Can I have you speak up into the microphone, please?
Sure. Sorry. I'm Mark Huggins with Paint and Brickway. We're the civil engineers on this project and surveyors. The townhomes are single-story buildings, and the, currently under construction on the site is the first plat of the Villas that are in, and it's scheduled to be complete for, the infrastructure is scheduled to be complete the fall of this year, and we have another. Okay. I'm sorry. Why don't you go ahead?
I'm Mike Brock, the developer of Grand Street. So on the senior villa site, phase one's supposed to be completed by October first of twenty twenty-five? I don't know.
And that would include the area that is being replatted here today and rezoned?
Yeah.
Because that's what it kind of looks like on the map. It's like, you know, where that three-story, you know, where the assisted living was going to be, that's part of phase one, correct?
No, that's, that's not part of, we're, we're not changing the lots on, on phase, the first plat.
And then the second phase is twenty twenty-seven, and the third phase is twenty twenty-nine.
So the, the portion that we're looking at today, which phase is that in? That's in phase?
That's phase one.
Phase one, okay.
Well, that's phase two. Phase one's already under construction.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that, that portion's phase two, sorry. That's April twenty twenty-seven, is completion date.
So.
Which is only part of that.
Yeah. So the original final plat went through that, for, what's the road right off of White Drive going to the east and west?
Hundred and seventy-eight.
Hundred and seventy-eighth street. That also included the, the clubhouse was the first phase, so they're sliding the clubhouse a little bit to the north. Jesse, if you would go to the, right there. So on, on this slide right here, it shows how the clubhouse has moved to the north a little bit off of the White Drive cul-de-sac. Additional lots were, are being created on the north side of the hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy-six place. So there, there are some slight changes to the original final plat. They will have to come back in, of course, and before you guys with a revised final plat and revised final development plan. Tonight is only the Tonight is only the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat. But you can see kind of the, the changes between this slide and the previous slide that had where this kind of purplish area, lavender area is. That's where that, the three-story 90-unit assisted living facility was. So really, the changes are the extension of White Drive cul-de-sac and that to the north. They deleted a cul-de-sac that went to the small cul-de-sac that went to the east of White Drive. And they've added a couple additional lots on the north side of that 176th place.
Thank you, Bob. I know we still have the public hearing open. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We still have the public hearing open. Is there any, any additional comments before we close the public hearing, based on that information?
I have several comments, but I.
If you have comments, now's the time to say them. If, if you have, if you want them on the public record.
I, I don't, I'm Sandra again. I don't plan on selling my house anytime soon, although I get an offer a month. But I'm wondering if that will change with the three and four-story buildings that I'm gonna be looking directly at? So that is a very big concern of mine. I can only speak for me, not my neighbors. So I understand that you got rid of the four-story. And I would ask you to please consider, those of us who live across the street from this, that you would consider our line of vision. And that is a very big concern for, for this woman. So I guess my question is, is this set in stone? Are we for sure gonna go ahead and do this? Or is this something that may change, just like these plans have changed? Or we, we don't know?
So I'm gonna help to alleviate some of your concern, I think. This proposal is removing the three-story building off of the, off of the development. So the three-story building will not be there.
Was there ever a four-story? And is it gonna be removed, or is it still in the offing?
The only building that'll have scale, and I can't remember the number of stories that it is, but up to the north adjacent to where the industrial tracks are, north of the area, that still has, that building is still in place there. But it's further north than any of the residential development. So for your area, what street did you say you were on?
East Lakota.
Yeah, you're gonna, you won't be adjacent to that. The, the fourth, well, the larger building is up in the northeast corner of the property. So if you look at the graphic that's up on there, the space that is in the far upper-right corner, where you see those larger kind of rectangles?
Yes.
That area there, that is being, will remain the same. And I don't know how many stories are projected there. Is that a four-story at that location? But the three-story that is further south, that, if you look again at the graphic there, and Jesse, will you put the cursor on that so she can see it? So the area that's further to the south, where the three-story was proposed right there, which is closer to Grand Street and is adjacent to the residential development, that three-story building is being removed from the development plan and will have single-story buildings in its place. So the, and the single-story buildings will be in that four-plex kind of format that the other villas are in.
Thank you for your.
Does that help?
Thank you, Professor.
Okay.
Thank you for helping clarify that, Dave. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing? Seeing as no one else is approaching the stand, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So I guess. We have a motion by Commissioner Olucci and a second by Commissioner Combs to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay. Moving into commissioner discussion, we'll start on my right this time.
Chair, Chair Dune, and I'm just gonna interrupt for a second, Jesse. Put the slide up with the recommendation on it and the conditions real quick. And Catherine, I may have a question that involves you on this one here. And I just noticed it when I was reading this, so if I had a chance to discuss this, I'm wondering if we need to have a third condition because of the way that this is, is written essentially? And that the planning commission would be recommending to the council or to the governing body regarding rezoning and preliminary development plan? But the preliminary plat is actually an approval that belongs to them. It's not a recommendation that goes forward. And in light of what we have received through the last month, where we've had issues where we may have to come back and forth, I'm wondering if a third condition should be added to this that indicates that the preliminary plat is approved with the condition of council approval of the development plan and rezoning. That way, if something goes differently in council or things go forward, you've got, you don't have approval hanging out there, but the council goes a different direction.
Right.
Then our problem is you gotta come back again because then we gotta reestablish the old preliminary plat.
Right.
At that point. So I'm thinking that we should probably have a third condition added here that says the preliminary plat is subject to the approval of the governing body or the preliminary development plan and rezoning being approved by the governing body.
Yeah, so if this ends up being recommended for approval, I think that would be smart. If that's a concern that, if the governing body would deviate in any way, so.
I'm not anticipating that. I'm just simply based on last month's where we had a situation where we had a preliminary plat that we had recommended denial, the planning commission had denied. It's that same procedural step. So for the applicant, and I want the applicant to understand this, it has nothing to do actually with proposals or anything else. It's a procedural point, so hopefully we're taking out a step if something goes differently with the governing body.
Right.
It'll, it'll still, the plat was essentially being approved tonight with the condition of approval of the rezoning and preliminary plat.
Yeah, I think if somebody ends up motioning for approval on this, that would be a smart third condition to add. I see no issue with that.
So your, your third condition, can you spell that out?
So your third, third condition would be something, essentially, the third condition would be preliminary plat approval.
Is contingent.
Is contingent upon the preliminary development plan and rezoning approval by the governing body. Does that make sense? I'm trying to keep it as short as possible.
Yeah. I guess if it clarifies it, it's like, if you guys, if someone approves it now, and then it goes further, and one of, one half of it is denied, then, like you said, it's hanging. Your approval is hanging out in there in a way, so.
We can discuss more about last month and different things when we get into discussion items. But that's, that's just a concern I have since we had that on the item last.
Okay. So we would still recommend, i- if we move forward that way, we would recommend rezon?
Yes, we recommend.
Recommend preliminary development plan. And then we'd also approve the preliminary plat with condition three, that the approval is contingent upon the governing body's approval of the rezoning.
And the associated preliminary development plan.
Right.
All right, the new guys are getting some.
Yeah, they're good.
It's over your head, it's okay.
They'll never wanna make a motion now.
Did we close public hearing?
Yes, we did. We had the motion by Commissioner Olucci and seconded by Combs. Five to go on that. Yes.
All right. So now we can have commissioner discussion. If there are any questions on the, on the development plan, rezoning, preliminary plat itself. Start on my right this time.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Self?
Yeah, I just, I just have a question for staff. On, on the analysis here, it's showing that it says that the, it says requires an adjustment to the zoning from RP5 to RP3. And then I see that it says from RP3 to RP4. I've, so I don't know if we're talking about the same thing? On the analysis, staff analysis, right before planning area development plan and plat?
Yeah, I could, I could answer that. So if you look at the slide that's up in front of you right now, a port, because our zoning districts are, are associated with those preliminary development plans, the preliminary development plan had stuff that has already been approved. Something, an area where the 90-unit, the deleted 90-unit assisted living facility was zoned RP5. A portion of the original layout and development was also zoned RP3. But because this is a change in the preliminary development plan, we wanted to make sure that everything was consistent. And so even though you have that originally, previously-approved development plan, this is not kind of, this does not follow it exactly because those are major changes that were made to the preliminary development plan. That's why we brought, that's why we requested the applicant bring everything back in under this RP3 umbrella. Does that make sense?
I'll, I'll add to what Bob is talking about. Essentially, what you have is the, if you look at the red area, the red-lined area, right, that's being covered by this proposal. What Bob is explaining is that a portion of that, which is in that light blue shaded color, was, is RP5, right? So that a portion of it was RP5. It's proposed to go to RP3 as part of this. The pink portion that's within that red-lined area is already RP3. But because the preliminary development plan covers all of that area, the split zoning like that, the reason staff is referring to it is because a portion of it is gonna technically remain RP3, but it has a new preliminary development plan associated with it. So that's essentially, it's a rezoning by technicality because of the associated revised preliminary plan, but it's the same zoning district for that portion of the property. It's, it's one of the strange things in our land development code. It talks about the preliminary development plan having to be associated with that planned district. So when we have these revised, technically, they are rezoning the property to the revised plan opposed to the plan that was in place previously.
A little bit. Okay. I, I think it seems we have two new commissioners here. Dave, do you mind kind of explaining the difference between RP5 to RP3 or vice versa? Just kind of have a broad.
So for everybody, actually, that's here, you have a couple things that go on with our, with our zoning districts and our residential districts in particular. So our residential districts allow for different types of buildings in each of the districts. So an RP5 tends to be a higher-density type of zoning district. So it's a very traditional, when you think about zoning in a traditional sense, you'll have R1, R2, R3, R4. And generally, as the number goes up, it allows for a greater density of housing. In our zoning code, because we have design criteria associated with residential development, as you move up, you may be allowed greater density, but you can also have different housing formats or building types, okay, under those things. So sometimes what you'll see in an RP5, the density goes up, but the allowed building types that are in that R5 district are, are restricted, if you will. And so one of the reasons this goes to RP3 here, or an R3 district in this sense, is because the building type that's being proposed would not be allowed in the R5, but it is allowed in the R3 district. So that's, that's a nuance to our code because of our design criteria. Those building types on top of our zoning districts, it's not all about density. Sometimes it's about what building types are allowed in each one of those zoning districts. That's a, that's a general overview. I think that's also why you heard Bob refer to the architecture of these new proposed built, uh, four-plex units are the same as what was proposed in this pink area as well. So their architecture is gonna be consistent in the way it looks. And that's an important point to note because it's not just about, okay, this is a building type that's allowed, but in our design consideration of the elevations and what we're looking at from the buildings, it's important that that architecture is consistent across the area.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any more questions. Mr. Teochee?
I do have really one question for the developer, and I believe it's been answered several times. I just want to verify. Of course, when this was either recommended for approval by us and eventually approved, the assisted living portion was a major component of the whole RHID, part of this project. That, the fabric of that is not changing, correct? I understand the total count may be going down, you know, nine or 90 units or the three stories versus now the four-plexes. But the, the purpose remains the same of those developed properties, correct?
So, so, and I, we're walking a line here, so just so you're aware. And that line is simply, I will say, as the developer was looking at this process, he assessed the market for the different types of buildings and the different types of offering. What has remained consistent is that this will be a senior living location, okay? But in a different format than the assisted living side of that.
I understand.
The governing body at its last meeting took a look closer at the RHID and the workings of the RHID and the elements involved with that tool and how it's implemented. I'm gonna refrain from talking too much about that because it's really outside our consideration. But I'd say part of what you're raising was discussed in that process last week.
And maybe I'll revise my question. The senior living aspect of it, that's a condition.
Yes.
That clearly is the same.
Correct. And I believe, Mike, you could verify that. Mike's shaking his head yes, that, yeah, it'll remain as senior living. It's just a different format.
Understand, perfect. No other questions?
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Oh, you have no questions, okay. All right. I don't have any questions. I appreciate all the discussion and the background information. It's helpful for, for new and existing people on the commission to learn. So if we don't have any more discussion, I will, I mean, and just keep in mind, we talked about that kind of revised condition there, you know, to make it contingent. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Can we clarify how the motion is made, that it does include that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I think as Commissioner Combs gets ready to do this, again, the beginning of this would be the planning commission approves of.
Correct.
Right, of the rezoning and associated preliminary plan and the approval of the preliminary plat, you know, that's still in that. So if you read that first paragraph, this planning commission approves. Then you could add, with condition three being added to that, and the wording for three.
Oh. I'll take a shot.
That's what you have to do.
Well, let me judge.
So the planning commission approves of the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan to rezone 10.75 acres from RP3 and RP5 districts to RP3 district, including the deviations as requested, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following conditions, items one, two, and a third, which was added, which should be the preliminary plat, excuse me, the planning commission will approve with the condition of the governing body's approval of the preliminary development plan and the associated development plan.
Good.
Yep.
Second.
Looking for the nod, that's.
No issue.
Just as we're, we're clear on the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan, it's still going to the governing body, preliminary plat, and it's here except for that condition.
Right.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Combs, a second by Commissioner Sosa, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, uh, item number four, officer elections.
Okay, we held off on the officer elections for a couple of months because we expected some transition with the planning commission. We now have a full planning commission, however, we have two of our longstanding or longer standing members absent. So we, we can have the election this evening, or we can table it for our August meeting. I would tell you, in the context of the report that was in your packet, we are looking at our bylaws because there's a conflict between our bylaws and the code in terms of when that elections, when elections are held. So in the upcoming months, you will also see some changes to the bylaws coming before you for consideration. So that I would leave it up to you if you want to hold the election this evening or table it for a month.
With Commissioner Berger, I know he's wanting to, I know he was going to be absent, had you heard from him that he had interest in?
From Commissioner?
From Commissioner Berger.
I did not hear anything from Commissioner Berger in regard to interest on any of the positions. Again, it's for chair and vice chair, the two positions. Commissioner Von der Schmidt, I received an email about five o'clock this evening about him having to be held up at work a little bit. I'm, I may ask Commissioner Sosa to comment a little bit about that.
As far as?
As far as Commissioner Von der Schmidt's interest or non-interest?
Yeah, I don't think he is interested. Because I, I don't, I don't say I don't mind waiting another month, it's not going to.
The only, the only thing it does is it makes whatever term, we get to a little bit shorter until the next election, because we want to get back in the cycle. The problem is what, one, I can't remember which one says January and one says May.
The code says May.
Yeah.
No, the code says January and our bylaws say May.
So there's a conflict on the elections anyway. So it just means we may be back in January, depending on what we can do with the bylaws to align things. You'll still serve as chair until then, Commissioner Sosa would still serve as vice chair until the election is held.
Yeah.
Can I put a little input in here? Being new to the commission, okay, I don't think it would be fair, you know, with the first meeting for the new commissioners to vote out positions like that, to be honest with you, um, you know, I've, I've watched you on the video, but I think it wouldn't be fair to the two commissioners that have been present for all meetings that I have seen, so, yeah, I would, I would consider table it.
Well, if we want to, if we want to table it, you need to make a motion to table it, then I believe you.
Let's do it just to be safe. Sometimes you're not required to, but because there's like a weird conflict with bylaws and code, I think it would be nice to have it on the record that you're tabling.
I'll make a motion that we table the election of officers until the August meeting.
Second, do we need to have the date for the meeting? I know sometimes it's like time specific. We just say August meeting, is that okay?
Or should we just say until the next?
Till the next?
Yeah.
The next scheduled?
Yeah.
So I motion that we table the election of officers until the next planned commission meeting.
I'll second. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Alucci, with a second by Commissioner Sosa, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Alright, uh, staff updates, if we have anything?
Yeah, I'm gonna, just quickly, again, with two new commissioners, a couple of things, you saw the nuances, I'm gonna talk. I'm gonna talk for a second here about what I was referring to. What we discovered last month, if you remember the case that was before you last month, the two new people won't obviously, but, um, we had a similar situation with kind of a rezoning plat situation, and as part of that, we were recommending or you recommended denial of the development plan and the rezoning and denial of the preliminary plat as presented.
Which?
This would, this was on one hundred and ninety ninth street.
Is that the commercial one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so as that happened, we, we were looking closer at some of the procedural items in the code, and that's when we recognized that because you have approval authority on the plat, right, by recommending denial, if the city council comes back on this with a different direction than the denial, we would have an approval hanging there and the applicant would have to actually refile the preliminary plat and bring it back to you again because you had, you had actually denied it. Whereas if we would have put that condition on there at that point in time, it would have given the flexibility either way. It's either would have been an approval if those things were approved, or denial if they were denied. So there's, it's a procedural, it's kind of a procedural nuance that becomes a problem for the applicant as much as for us, because then we're asking them to come back, reapply, bring those stuff forward again and do that. So, um, that's, that's what we caught last month, and that's why I raised the point here. I, I hadn't been thinking about it until I saw it in front of me here on the screen, and it's kind of that same problem, but in reverse, in the sense that, yes, you're recommending approval, but if the council, if the governing body decides to go a different direction, now we got this approval hanging out there, and by it being approved, if they decided to come back and, and because of the denial on the change, go to the original plat that was there, the preliminary plat that was there, they'd have to come back again to get that reapproved. And so that's, it's an odd kind of procedural element. It's one of the fun things about ordinances and governance. So it's a little bit odd to explain, but that's why I raised the question I did today on that, is, as I was looking at that, and we didn't, we didn't catch it when we talked, and it was just something that slapped me in the face, and I said, oh, wait a minute, I don't want the same thing potentially occurring here. The other thing I wanted to do just very quickly as an orientation for everybody, and especially our new members, and I mentioned this, I think, to, to both of them when we met with them prior to this meeting, in the fronts of your packets, I just want to make sure that we have provided sheets now that have the review criteria for the different types of cases that are in front of you. Feel free to, to utilize that as a resource, especially on plats. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that on plats is plating is a very technical process. In general, what you'll hear from staff is, when we review it, the engineering staff reviews it, public works and utilities and all the easements are there, we're reviewing to make sure they're meeting the specifications for lot sizes according to zoning or easement widths that are needed for different types of utilities, for right of way width that's needed for the roadways and things like that. So plats are a very technical type review, and generally when they're coming to you, we're going to be looking at it as a recommendation of approval because they've met all those technical criterias and specifications. And that's really all plating is doing, is subdividing land for legal lot sales purposes. So when we think about that, it's not really a land use question like a rezoning is. When we deal with rezoning, we're in those other criteria where sometimes we're looking at, okay, what's the context of the neighborhood, what's going on here and there? Plating is merely dividing the land, legally dividing the land, so it can be sold off in, in parcels versus the large property. And so we have to be very careful about that when we're talking about those things. And that's where the sensitivity too, to the, to the denial versus approval side of this becomes important, because if you have cause for denying a plat or you think you do, we need to be discussing that formally, because we want to make sure we're in those review criteria when we're talking about those things. So those sheets that are there are a guide sheet for you to help you with the process. Don't be afraid to refer to them when we're in a plat or something like that, you can simply go to that sheet and go, hey, you know, staff, I was looking at this after we got the case, I'm noticing this thing here, but I don't see how it fits review criteria number five, or whatever it is. We can have that discussion with you and, and we can talk about that and how it was looked at. Maggie, I don't know, did you, do you want to add anything to that at all as far as the use of the review criteria? So, so I would tell you, just kind of get used to looking at those things, that's why we're usually stuck on comments like stormwater and, you know, traffic and those kinds of things, they're just very technical reviews. They're harder sometimes for the public to understand because it's really not a public hearing item, the plats are not. But the rezonings and the development plans are. And so sometimes when we're grouping those things together, you're going to find staff is going to kind of pull out some of the nuances on you. And when we talk about public hearings, it's really about the rezoning, it's really about the preliminary development plan. The plat itself does not require that public hearing, so, okay?
And in, in the advance, there was a, a denial of a plat by the planning commission. There, that particular item doesn't go to the council at that point, correct?
Now, the only way it would go to the council is it's an appeals process. So I believe it's within seven days, I think by the land development code, the applicant would have seven days to appeal it to the, the governing body. So they could do that, it's a way for them to seek relief from your decision. And that's no different than any other process, so like when we go through a rezoning process, if people are not comfortable with the governing body, the applicant doesn't like what the governing body decided or didn't feel like it was justified, their appeal is actually to the courts at that point in time. So it's a little bit different here. You're acting in an administrative capacity under the plat side of this thing.
Right.
The appeals process goes to the governing body from you and not to, not to the court as a first step.
Okay.
So, um, that gives the applicant that opportunity.
Thank you.
Final word, I guess, on that would be there's a chart, a fun chart in the code, and it's online, and I pull it up every meeting, and it says what the topic is, so preliminary plan, zoning amendment, whatever, and it has a tick next to like who is the final decision maker on that, and who gets the appeal, and blah, 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 so it kind of helps you visualize.
Maggie, we can, let's plan on sending a link out to them, or at least if we could cut that piece of it, send them that in a PDF, let's, let's plan on doing that, it's a good point. That way you can see that summary sheet and what your role is. And it really does help to clarify what staff's role is, what your role as planning commissioners are, and then what the governing body's role is. And so what we, what we want to always plan for is at each level, that next player, if you will, that staff, we only have so much flexibility, you have a little more authority and, and ability to be flexible, and then you have the city council that can look at it even at a different level for a variety of different reasons. So it's, it's okay if you have a recommendation that's different than the staff's recommendation, it's okay if the city council or the governing body decides to go a different route than what you've recommended, again, because of that procedural role that each one of us plays. It, it really affords the ability that something is scrutinized pretty well at each level. So there's, there's not this necessarily just follow staff because staff recommended approval or denial, but again, you also have to look at when you're thinking about it from the standpoint of, um, maybe going against the staff recommendation. If you watch, a lot of times we're trying to show you the staff recommendation and you hear Bob or Jesse or Maggie talking to the effect of the staff found this, this, and this, that's their justification for why they're recommending the way they are. Under the review criteria, you as a group may say, well, that's fine and well, staff, but we think this item over here gives us the justification for denial under this review, and we think that that's more important to do it that way. That way it's clarifying essentially that your decision is not just arbitrary type decision, it's based in the review criteria, which is what's really important in these cases. And then the city council or the governing body may at some point, when they're looking at it, they may look at those criteria and they pick out another one and they say, yeah, that's great that the planning commission thought that, and this is great that the staff thought that, but here's what we really think, and oh, by the way, we're the governing body, we make these decisions. So, um, and, and all you do is you respect the process at that point. You may not like what they, they do, or you may not like what staff's recommending. For instance, the last month when we made the one recommendation, it was based a lot on the conflict between an ordinance or policy of the city, the comp plan and what was being proposed, and we felt, you know, that's where we're at, this is, this is how this context fits, um, and would leave it to you guys and the, and the city council to determine what's the best direction for the city. Do you want to add anything, Maggie, or?
I'm just happy when I read the minutes, you don't, uh, actually repeat all of the motions that I redo.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's recorded.
I know, exactly. I'm focusing on the paper.
All I have tonight, Maggie, do you have anything from staff tonight?
I just had a, I just had a few things. As I mentioned, we're working on the bylaws, so you will see those. Just as a recap, the items that you had last month for council, the two food truck conditional use permits were approved, the one hundred and ninety ninth street commerce center was removed from the agenda, so they did not take action at this point. The item, the grand street item on tonight's agenda will go to the council on August eighteenth. And we will have a meeting in August, we do have a few items for that agenda.
If you have a schedule conflict, let us know, so we know in advance that we have a quorum problem or not. The other thing I'm just going to bring up, Maggie and I talked today, anticipate either a report like Maggie just gave so you understand where things move through the process, or we may do like a written item that's just attached to your agenda that'll show, you know, what happened to items that you had on your agenda before. So we're going to try to keep you informed as to how things are moving through the process or what's going on there.
I think it's nice to, to do that kind of shit with you, so we know what happened, you know, this.
This is, this is all Maggie's idea, so.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a good thing, I think that way you guys are informed as to what's happening or not happening after you've seen an item.
Yeah, because I know like the pet, uh, I hope it's the, the kennel, yeah, like that was kind of like, oh, I didn't know what happened to that.
Yeah, where that bounced, bounced to several meetings, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Alright, uh, appreciate the staff updates, um, nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Really?
I'll second the motion.
You do not allow anyone to stand up and talk, it's attending the meeting?
We don't typically have that on the planning commission agenda, right? What are you here for, or?
I'm here because I believe Gardner has got a serious health issue.
Okay.
This may not be the correct for a city organization, if you don't start with a planning commission, I believe every organization that works here in the city of Gardner should be aware of the situation. The reason I'm so adamant about this, my own father was in real estate, he built five subdivisions back in Michigan, five of them. One, he put in a church, a Catholic church. One of the things that he resisted doing was allowing ponds in any of his subdivisions. The reason he did that was the fact that mosquitoes were an issue, not only for him but for his family. I am very, very allergic to mosquitoes, very allergic. I swell up, and at one time I had to go to the hospital because I was bitten three times on my cheek, didn't realize it because I was sleeping, and, and the infection actually closed my eye, and I could not see. In my job, I had to drive and travel, and I had to get somebody else to help me do my job, because I actually couldn't drive a car safely. Now, if you come in on the second entrance here, on Center Street. Now, if you come in on the second entrance here on Center Street, as you refer to it as Gardner Road, I believe that that area, just as you come into the right, past the car wash, is an embarrassment to the city of Gardner. It is nothing but scum, it is the size of at least a city lot, and it breeds mosquitoes every single day. Now, you've got to understand, there are roughly three thousand five hundred species of mosquitoes, there's only a hundred and seventy-five that we have to deal with in the United States. These mosquitoes carry malaria, and more importantly, for children, they carry encephalitis. Some of them can even give you West Nile. Now, maybe none of you are allergic to it. The mosquito is attracted by CO2, you know what CO2 is? It's your carbon dioxide that you breathe out, you breathe in oxygen. The reason I'm aware of this is because I was in polymer chemistry, I was in chemistry for the E.I. Dupont Corporation, I worked in a research lab, so I know a lot about chemistry, et cetera, et cetera. Because I'm such a loud mouth and I breathe so much oxygen out, it literally attracts mosquitoes. I've been bitten four times so far this year in my own garage, not out mowing the lawn. If you come by the house and see me from time to time, I actually wear a Tyvek's suit to go out and work on my own lawn and to mow it. Mosquitoes have a tendency to fly anywhere from two blocks to two miles, but with wind conditions, they can fly forty miles away. As you come into Gardner, there's no less than six area ponds. Two of them, the one out here and the one on one hundred and eighty-sixth street, is covered, just covered with algae. This means that there's mosquitoes breeding in there constantly, every single day, because the water does not move. So you could sit there and say, well, okay, smart aleck, how do we stop this? I hate it when somebody suggests something and has no answer. I have your answer.
Wait, okay, yeah.
So, so what I'm gonna suggest here is, first of all, did you sign in on the sheet when you came in?
Yes, sir.
So we've got your name and everything.
Yes, and my address.
Okay.
I didn't put your phone number down there, but you have my address.
Okay, so.
You can drive by and watch me wash my truck almost any pretty Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna suggest, though, where you really need to make those comments is directly to the city council, so.
Sir, I'm aware of that, but you see, the planning commission has to be aware of these situations.
Yeah, and the.
Because to stop this problem, you can either treat it with chemicals.
Correct.
Which I know most of you are not gonna want to do, but it's up to the landlord, if he's going to maintain that pond or not. I even want you to pass, I want the city to pass an ordinance, so that you must treat this water at least once a month.
Yeah.
Now, let's say that you don't want to do it, then I want you to fill it in like my dad.
We, we also may have already on the books codes and regulations, and that's where we need to follow up with code enforcement on this issue, too.
Right.
Especially with the ponds that are in existence, because we may already have public nuisance codes regarding this.
Right.
And health codes, which the planning commission has nothing to do with, but what we can do.
Correct.
Let's make sure, Maggie, if you'll get.
Sir, sir, I'm just doing this to make sure that you're aware.
Understand, I understand, but there may be, there may already be things on the books, we just need to make code enforcement aware of it so they can go act on that. I have to find out that. So if you don't mind leaving your contact information with Maggie, if you'll get his phone number before he leaves.
I have it down there, but I don't have my phone number, but you can.
And we, you can talk to us all you'd like, but for the record and the cleanliness purpose for public record, the, the public hearing portion of this is closed, but your concerns can be heard outside of the meeting if you want to talk to me as attorney representation about the codes that you're concerned about, or wanting to talk about ordinances or any of that, I'm happy to talk to you about that after the, after we close out.
Okay, again, I just want to, see, my father was in real estate, he had five subdivisions.
Yep.
He would not allow a pond in his subdivision for exactly the same reason I'm discussing.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna finish up the regular meeting, and then let's, let's at least get your phone number and things like that, because then we can follow up on some stuff, okay?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, wait, no, we had, we had a motion to.
We did.
Yes, you have a motion to adjourn, and I seconded it.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, okay. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.
Those Michigan mosquitoes were giant.